Good evening. I'm going to call the September 29, 2022, regular meeting of the Board to order. Will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Moskowitz?
Present.
Councilmember De La Rata? Absent. Councilmember McPartland?
Here.
Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Supervisor Puccioni?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We wish to respectfully acknowledge that Niskuna is on the traditional lands of the Kanakahaka and the Mahikanak peoples, past and present, and we honor with gratitude the land itself and the peoples who have stewarded this land throughout generations. Now moving on to the committee reports. Oh, I apologize. We have approval of the July 12, 2022, special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to...
Motion to approve the special meeting minutes from July 12?
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approval of the July 26, 2022, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Are there any changes? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, a motion to approve the September 13, 2022, special meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any... or I'm sorry, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any changes to those minutes? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those meeting minutes are approved. Moving on to committee reports. Police and Public Safety?
Thank you. Police and Public Safety Committee met on September 1 at 3:30. For operations, we discussed the possibility of having one of our detectives work part-time with the Schenectady County Street Crimes Task Force. This would have some reimbursement through Schenectady County, and it's being reviewed by Attorney Finan, and it would possibly be a good collaboration with other law enforcement entities to utilize their workforce as well. Our department is going to have more directed patrols in neighborhoods due to an uptick in larcenies from vehicles. Our department has assigned details for overnight hours due to this and directed patrols to specific areas that are getting targeted, and Chief Koshin advised everyone to please lock their vehicles and put them in garages when possible. For fleet and equipment, we are looking to apply for a grant through the Niskuna Community Foundation to fund two trailers for our radar signs. For training, we discussed that Officer Guest continues to progress through her field training. Recruit Spataro continues to progress through the Zone 5 Academy. Detective Franyay Daly and Kafaga will be attending a sex offender training on September 9, so they attended that. Sergeant Franyay, Sergeant Partey, Sergeant Relishen, Chief Koshin, and Lieutenant Twitty will be attending a training at the Department of Criminal Justice Symposium on topics of management. Officers Hemmerding and Vina will be attending breath alcohol operator courses in Washington County in the beginning of October. For citizens issues, we had some new issues. Ben Mastriani requested a conversation regarding changing the speed limits in Old Niskuna to 25 miles per hour. Governor Hochul passed legislation saying that we could change from 30 to 25 miles per hour, and we're looking at that as a possible viable option, and we're in discussion of that in our committee. Paul Shelma Dean requested the area of Baker Avenue Regent Street and Baker Avenue Doorwell Boulevard be looked at for stop signs. He's worried about speeding, including speeding school buses. Traffic study was completed. Officer Munger is continuing to analyze the area. We're planning to continue this analysis, and Officer Munger did contact Mr. Shelma Dean and go over his findings and his ideas. Frederick Alber stated concerns over speed and stop signs not being complied with in the area of Van Antwerp Road between Grand Boulevard and Union Street. Chief Koshin directed patrols to this area. A digital speed sign is going to be deployed, and a traffic study is going to be completed. For town events, the police department has been supporting the farmer's market. We're continuing the Coffee with a Cop. The next one will be October 15. The police department supported the Niskuna Fall Fun Run this past September 24. They'll be supporting the Mohawk Hudson Marathon October 9, the Niskuna Shred Event October 22, and Drug Takeback Day October 29. For the school district, Chief Koshin just reminded everyone that the traffic patterns will be changing because of the school buses and the car pools, and he asked everyone to just be patient with each other and that there also might be changes because of the Capitol Project. For personnel, we are continuing to recruit for potential lateral transfers, and we're also accessing the current civil service list to potentially hire someone to join the January Academy class. We talked about Supervisor Puccioni and Chief Koshin working with U Albany to build a partnership for a graduate student and now analyst position. And that was our committee minutes. October 6 at 3:30 will be our next meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. Community Programs?
Thank you, Supervisor. The Community Programs Committee met on Thursday, September 1. With the cooler fall days upon us, the town pool has officially closed for the season as of Labor Day weekend, and on behalf of myself, Lori, and the entire Community Programs Department, a huge thanks goes out to all of the pool managers and staff for a seamless season. With the closing of the pool also came the closing of the driving range, and again we thank the driving range attendants, and we look forward to seeing everyone again in the spring. Fall rec soccer began on September 10. We had over 500 players register this year and even had to add an extra time slot for the Skills and Drills Program due to a sizable waitlist. The 14th Annual Fall Fun Run was held last weekend. We had over 70 participants and received $1,600 in sponsorship donations. Best Fitness joined us for games, and Mr. Dingeling sold refreshments. And on behalf of the town, congratulations to the winners, Dominic D. Felice and Lily Harrow. Again, this fall, we will be hosting movie nights on the Town Hall green. Dates have been scheduled for October 14 and October 21, and information on movie titles and times will be forthcoming shortly. Switching gears to the Senior Center, the first post-COVID trip was held earlier this month with a trip to the Schenectady Armory to check out the Van Gogh exhibit. Everyone had a great time. The feedback was excellent, and there's even been requests for a second trip, so information will be out shortly on that. We have had some very informative presentations at the Senior Center over the last couple weeks. Earlier this month, Special Agent Ian Walker from Homeland Security led a presentation on senior fraud awareness. Chief Koshin and Detective Kafaga participated and explained how residents can report suspected fraud locally. I was actually at the Senior Center earlier this week, and a resident there told me that a couple days after that presentation, she had gotten a suspicious phone call, and based on what she learned that day, she knew right away to hang up. So if our education worked and we helped one person, then I think we did a good job. We also had a presentation earlier this week by the Alzheimer's Association on the 10 warning signs of Alzheimer's, and turnout for both of those events was much better than expected. New next month, the Senior Center, in conjunction with the Police Department, will be launching Coffee Time with a Cop. Coffee Time with a Cop will begin on October 18 and will be held on the third Tuesday of every month at 10:30. As expected, and as we've been saying all along, we did see an uptick in attendance at our exercise programs as the cooler weather rolls in. Also, after months of discussion and hard work, the new bus has finally arrived. It is currently being registered and stickered, and we hope to have it in service shortly. Coming next month, we are very excited to be hosting an American Red Cross Blood Drive. The Blood Drive will be held on October 17, 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Senior Center, and appointments can be made by visiting redcrossblood.org and using sponsor code TownOfNiskuna. And lastly, if anybody would like information on book club, Schenectady Arts Society workshops, or November's Defensive Driving Course, check out October News and Announcements on the Senior Center website. And our next meeting is one week from today, Thursday, October 7 at 3:00 p.m. in the Schaefer Room, and I invite everyone to attend. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Councilmember Moskowitz. And now for Public Works?
Thank you, Supervisor. Public Works, which also includes highway and public facilities, we met on September 1 also. In our meeting, we discussed what the highway crews have been doing, their work with clearing of trees, maintaining of trails by our Parks Department. We had quite a few residents from the Hummingbird Manor sort of subdivision neighborhood come in and talk about their road, the road conditions. We explained to them the process for how we determine what roads in the town can be paved, when they'll be paved. They were very appreciative of the information that we gave them. Since that meeting, our highway crew department has gone out there, evaluated the roads in their neighborhood, made some necessary repairs, caulked some cracks, filled some holes, and at some point, as usual, you know, every town road at some point gets repaved, but we use a system called Cornell Roads that helps us determine by traffic flow and the age of the roads to determine when that will, when those things will happen. So again, they were appreciative of the information that they were given by our highway superintendent. Yard waste, fall is coming upon us very quick, so watch the website and the newspaper. We will be publishing when our loose leaf brush and pickup will be, and the department continues to go out and pick up yard waste if you are on the yard waste pickup program. At our meeting, we also discussed CDL and CDL in-house training for our employees. This is a requirement that the state has put out, and so we're working to do that in-house to save the taxpayers money. Paving list was discussed for 2022 and 2023. We had some finance items on the agenda at our meeting, purchasing a trailer for the Parks Department and one for the Highway Department, also getting finance approval for striping here on Knott Street East Extension. You can see all the paving's done, and we've got all the striping done on that road, and the Highway Department also does the striping of crosswalks. We continue to work on those items. Also, at the meeting was discussed some public facilities, this building here, the Senior Center. I'm happy to report that our highway crew or our public facilities crew, you can call them whatever, they wear many hats, and they've been now doing some work here at Town Hall with tearing down a wall that's behind these windows right here that need some regrading, so we're doing some work on that here at Town Hall. Also, over by the Police Department, there's some walls that are going to be, need to be replaced or just removed, and they're also working down at the Rec Center/Senior Center to work on some drainage issues that we, that we have there. So they're doing those types of things also. We got a report on the tennis court update at Avon Crest Park, which that contract has been let out, so that work has been started over there. Public Works, which then includes water and sewer, and our engineer, Matt Yedo, at his portion of the meeting, we discussed we're still looking for a junior engineer. I know I've said it at the last meeting, and I continue to say it. If anybody knows anybody, please encourage them possibly to apply here because we've got an open position, and it's a good job. You can learn a lot, and Town in Niskuna is, is a good place to work. For our attorney items in that meeting, we had sewer extensions, our water contract with the City of Schenectady Dish Network, and some fence agreements were also discussed. Water and sewer maintenance, that's always discussed. We are purchasing three auto flushing hydrants. We have some streets in the town which are dead ends, cul-de-sacs, where if you have that sort of piping there and you've got hydrants at the end of those, you need to flush them. So what happens now is we have an employee from the Water Department that has to go out there either on a weekly basis, sometimes even more than that, to flush that to keep the water flowing. So we're purchasing auto flush hydrants that will do that automatically, and again, save taxpayers money in the long run and make for a more efficient system. So we've got those to be purchased. Our utility billing will be going out. We'll see resolutions for that. Also, at our meeting, we discussed the wastewater treatment plant, the organic waste program, which will be beginning very soon, some budget modifications that we have to make to some other equipment down there to sanitize the water. We've got resolutions for augers and pumps to continue to replace, improve all the equipment that they can. Our next meeting will be on October 6 at 8:00 a.m. That's both for Public Works and Transportation and Public Facilities.
Thank you, Councilmember McPartland. Okay, moving on to my remarks, I'd like to start tonight with a review of investment by the tech sector in Niskuna. Since we last met, I'm happy to report that mid-month GE announced it would be keeping all of the three companies here in town for global research activities. It's outstanding news for our community. We'll continue to be a world leader in innovation. It's a strong positive sign for our local economy, as well as it means we'll keep approximately 1,200 jobs here in town. I'd like to thank the leadership at GE as well as Schenectady County and Metroplex for their partnership. It's good for Niskuna, the county, and also good for GE. I'd also like to highlight an announcement made at the beginning of the month by E1 Corporation. E1 is expanding its operations in Niskuna. It's worked in partnership with, again, Metroplex and Schenectady County, and this means it will make an investment of over $6 million over the next two years to build 27,000-plus square foot addition to expand manufacturing. The plan also includes R&amp;D, and over five years, the expansion is expected to add more than 30 jobs. For those who are not familiar with this facility on Balltown Road, it's an exciting project, and it will further strengthen our tech corridor. I also want to thank E1 Corporation for investing in Niskuna, Schenectady County, and Regulon at Metroplex. I'm happy to have those folks as partners. I'm also happy to report that Momentive is scheduled to move into the campus located just across the street from E1, and it's been taking the necessary steps to facilitate their move to Balltown Road. And if you watch the town's business meetings, you'll see Momentive is moving forward with their plans. Momentive is a global high-performance silicones and specialty solutions company, and we're also proud to be their next hometown. In other news, the town is in the process of finalizing a schedule for the three budget workshops for the month of October. The dates are Wednesday, October 5, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., Friday, October 7, from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., and Wednesday, October 12, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. When the dates are final and the presentation order is set, the dates will be posted on the town's website and emailed to all residents who subscribe to the News and Announcement Service. This will be an opportunity for the town board, the supervisor, and the comptroller to work in real time to discuss preliminary numbers. If you choose to watch, you can expect to hear discussions of revenues, expenses, bonding, use of fund balance, and the America, American Rescue Plan Act funds, among other topics. We'll be guided by a five-year look back, town law, state law, best practices, fiscal responsibility, and numerous consultations with the Office of the State Comptroller. This is not the same as the public hearing on the budget, which will take place later in the process. This is a workshop only. And as Councilmember McPartland described earlier, the tennis courts at Avon Crest are currently under construction, so you may see that construction on the tennis and pickleball courts are moving along rapidly. We'll also anticipate that work will be started soon at the dog park to create a small dog park area at Blatnik Park, and our crews will also be starting the project to address the drainage issue at the Blatnik Park baseball fields, more specifically the Babe Ruth Baseball Field. That is all I have for tonight, and we'll move on to the public hearing. Will the clerk please call the public hearing? A public hearing regarding a placement of certain parcels in the correct consolidated sewer district. Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for the public hearing? Okay. Seeing there is no one here to speak, I'm going to close this public hearing, and we'll... And I'll go ahead and open privilege of the floor.
Linda Rizzo, 22, 29, Fairland Parkway. I have a quick question about the budget hearings. You said October 5. Am I wrong? Is October 5 Yom Kippur?
Yes.
You know, we've never had a budget hearing on Yom Kippur. I mean, you have many residents that won't even be able to look at it, watch it on TV. I'm sure this is an oversight because it would be as terrible if you had a meeting on Good Friday. So I would expect that you would be changing that for our residents. Okay, all right. My next point is this. I have the opportunity of reading the agreement between the town and Verizon that was proposed in 2020 and was approved by the board. I believe you were on the board then. Yeah, I don't know if you remember it, but the agreement that I read and a couple of other people read it really didn't say anything about jigging up the lawns. It talked mainly about upgrading on the poles, similar to what they did in Schenectady in Scotia. So my question is this. Why would they be changing it if that was the original agreement in 2020, in January of 2020? I think the resolution was sponsored by Denise McGraw, and she worked with Verizon on that. I just am puzzled about it for one reason. I have 5G, I have spectrum. My neighbors have spectrum. We all have 5G. We have high-speed internet. No one's lawns have to be dug up for spectrum. They do it through the wire, through the telephone poles. I am a little bit puzzled, and we're, nobody who's questioning this is anti-competition. Believe me, only a socialist would be anti-competition. I believe in competition. I support residents that want Verizon. I just don't think streets upon streets have to be dug up to get Verizon, especially Schenectady isn't being dug up, dug up, neither is Scotia. So I pose that I think that agreement needs to be looked at because, as I said, it was done in 2020. It was a good agreement. Yes, we do need competition in the town. I personally, I know that people that have Verizon versus Spectrum, they're paying $25 less than I'm paying. It's not exactly a tremendous savings, but that's besides the point. The agreement does not talk about that. My second thing is, and I'm going to address this to the supervisor, I got a strange phone call today when I left the house, and it sort of puzzled me. I think it's a rumor. I hope it's a rumor, but I'm bringing it out because if it is a rumor, I think you should know about it in fairness, and you should dispel the rumor. I got a call from a resident who happens to be a Democrat and asked me if I knew anything about a Democratic committee meeting, a private meeting with you, with certain committee people. I said no, and that at that Democratic so-called small get-together, there was a discussion of raising your salary to $100,000 a year and how it could be sold to the community. I told the person who told me that, that has to be a rumor. It can't possibly be true. I'm a committee person, and if such a meeting was even called, it would be illegal if it were called. You have to send a notice out to all committee people. Secondly, I could never even imagine the committee being used to sell anybody's salary increase in the community, and $100,000 for anybody sitting up there is crazy. It's ludicrous. We're in the middle of a recession. So I want to bring it up to you, Supervisor. If it's not true, then certainly I would expect that you would deny it and say that alleged rumor is basically false. My, and I hope it is false, because I will say, as a Democratic Committee woman, you won't see me selling that. My next and my last thing is, having, I don't mind waiting to get up to speak. I don't have time to come to all these meetings anyway, but doing it after all the reports, you know, we call this privilege of the floor like it's a privilege to get up here, even though we're footing the bill, we're paying your salaries. I think we're even paying your health insurance, and if you don't want your health insurance, you get close to $10,000 in a buyout. Now, I know you have to justify your sitting up there, but it would seem to me, if you cared about public input, it's not a good optic. You should really have it at the beginning because what it says is, everyone has to listen to your infocommercials on how great a job you're doing, and then the peons in the audience can get up, make their statement, and then to add injury to insult, you get five minutes, and you dub it privilege of the floor. I would suggest you call a public input, and personally, I don't care where you put this public input. You could keep it till at the end of the meeting, but the optics aren't good. It's bad optics, especially when a lot of people in the community don't even realize you get health insurance and buyouts up to $10,000 in addition to your salary. And again, I know you have to justify why you're sitting up there, but I find it humorous. Thank you.
My name is Alice Rubinfeld. I live in Orchard Park. I've been a resident in Niskuna for 47 years, and I'm here to tell you a brief story. I don't know whose brilliant idea it was to have a call center for the police located in Rotterdam. So this was my experience. I was out with a client when I turned my phones off, and apparently my security system, for which I give the town $55 a year for the privilege of having a security system, went off. I guess it went into the call center because my, I never got, I never got a call. My phone was off. And I, when my appointment with my client was over, I came home. At about 4:30 in the afternoon, a police car pulled up to my house, and two lovely young gentlemen stepped out, very nice, to see if I, what went on. Apparently, my alarm went off at 2:48 in the afternoon. I am 79 years old. I live alone. It's one of the reasons I have a security system. It was now 4:35 in the afternoon. I asked the police why they came. They said, "Well, you have a call, you're part of a call center in Rotterdam, and it came at kind of the change of shift, and they're under instructions to take the calls as they come in." Now, the fact that I'm 79 years old, okay, and someone could have come in with a baseball bat and beaten me about the head and face and left me bleeding to death on the phone, made me make a call to my two adult sons who live out of town, who suggested I talk to an attorney about it. The fact of the matter is that our alarms used to be able to ring directly into the police station. I'm a great believer that if you have a false alarm once, you get a bye, or $25 fine. The second one, maybe you get a $50 fine. Anything over the second false alarm, you pay the town $100 bucks a pop. But the bottom line is, your job is to protect... But the bottom line is, your job is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of your citizenry. And that was not. And the attorney said, had anything happened, had it been an incident, and my children chose to sue the town who had a police force, which was unresponsive, that it would be on you. This is a serious problem. We are a graying community. People are either leaving this town to find better housing outside of this town with lower taxes, as many of my clients are. Or you make life more comfortable. I would like to see you pull out of the cooperative in Rotterdam. I think it's important. We have a terrific police force. And until this incident, they have been incredibly responsible, responsive. Why should I be put at the end of a list and police show up over two hours after the incident occurred? Now, it isn't just about me. It's about anybody. It's about an emergency. It's about anything. And I don't know what we get out of the cooperative, okay? I know people think that when they put things together, that it gets more efficient. I think it gets less efficient. We had a very efficient police department before this. If this ever happens again, I can promise you, I will not be standing before you. My attorney will be. That I can promise you.
Alice. Next?
Yes.
Oh.
You want to go?
Nope.
Oh, I'm going to walk over here.
Lorraine Zabin, 2455 Brookshire Drive. I'm very happy to see you. You may not be happy to see me because I have a whole list that I forgot. But I can remember some of the things that I would like to discuss primarily with the supervisor. I have lived here a year longer than Ms. Rubinfeld. She sat on the zoning board and was a terrific member. People had a fair shake when they went to the zoning board. These are things you new people really don't know about the existence of the former Niskiuna. One of the things that has disturbed me since I've known every supervisor for the past, since I moved here in the first one, was Marty Moore. Terrific. I said she was always my favorite Republican. Through the list of supervisors, and I've known every one of them. We've had Republicans, Democrats, conservatives. And they've all had their benefits and they've all had their unfortunately flaws, as this one has. And the reason that I am upset with the new supervisor is that the very first command was to choose a new pink color for the supervisor's office. It didn't go that far. It was completely eliminating the supervisor's furniture that was specifically built when the town hall, the new town hall under Supervisor Ed Riley, was voted on, established, very well received. It was a grain family farm. You probably don't know too much about the history. But I want to tell you that what happened to furniture that really didn't belong to the supervisor to disperse. Where is it? Where did it go? I've heard you threw it out. I said, no, no, she wouldn't, she's too smart to have done that. So what did you do with it? Put it in the basement with the other relics? Or did it go to people that perhaps would have loved that beautiful desk or the chairs or the break front? That, but my point is that when the furnishings seem to be more important than the politics, I'm a little confused. I am a totally lover of Niskiuna. The good and the bad. And believe me, we've had both. I have not liked the new hours that the supervisor has deemed a privilege. I don't like the fact that we're hearing rumors already about a change of venue. The town supervisor became full-time under Luke Smith. And that was because he was retiring from down in Westchester. He did live in town. His wife was a native school teacher. And he wanted to extend his civil service. And he wanted to be full-time. The board approved it. So the board approved a full-time supervisor and a part, not a part-time deputy, but a full-time supervisor. Now, it stayed that way. It, as I believe, I think after Luke, I don't know, I can't remember quite who came. But I think it might, we've had females and male supervisors. And I think that they have equally been successful. Some have had 10 years of service. That would be five, I think, five elections. And we've had some that have only had one election. So they weren't probably as well, as well served. So the reason I'm telling you that is because I do have a history of the town, which most of you don't. The attorney has been here, she's been here a while. We do have some new people. Our clerk, who runs the finest town clerk's office in the county. And they know it. I talk to Michelle's all the time. And they always answer the phone. But lately, there has to me been a lack of cohesiveness. During the pandemic, we had a problem with coming in, going out. But I think the thing that disturbed me with the most was when we elect a supervisor to be our spokesman. That the first thing she does is change the supervisor's office that has a history. And it was the wrong move. I don't know who advised you. The other thing, so that I want to find out where the heck the furniture went. I also want to find out that now you are about the, I can't think, maybe the 10th supervisor because of the different terms. Some were here 10 years, some were one, some were eight, that type of thing. But the fact remains that we have lived with this, I am a senior, a very old senior. And to get to the senior citizen place out there on the hill, lack of parking, lack of conditions, plumbing that keeps to breaking down, and nothing except the change of directors has ever taken place. There have been thoughts of moving it. There have been thoughts of doing something different. But you know what? It's always the same. It's on the bottom of the list. So that's another consideration that I think the new administration should be thinking about. I believe we have a new councilperson who is in charge of the senior center. Is that correct? It's just too hard for me to drive out there. The parking is terrible on the side of the hill. Going in there, the bathrooms are not always agreeable. But the fact is, we don't have lunches anymore. We got rid of the homemade luncheons. We allow outside residents. I don't know whether they pay a fee to join a Niskiuna senior citizens. But we live here. We're the ones that pay the taxes. We're the ones that try to hire the best people. And I do think that the supervisor, the director is terrific. I've talked with her on the phone. I've tried to get out there. But I'm a senior. I'm here almost 50 years. And as I've told most of my friends that are younger than I, prepare for old age because it's going to happen. And you still want to be viable. And that's why I have to read two papers a day and keep. This is, this is your plug-in because hearing comes, bad hearing comes to all of us. Anyway, I have come here, I forgot the list. There were several things that I did want to discuss with you. I am very disturbed about what I hear. I don't like progressive movements that change. I don't like people that hire their friends instead of civil service, which apparently is no longer part of our administration. And I don't know why not. I don't like the idea that we put people in positions of new committees. We have no idea what their credentials are. We don't know as citizens who are paying for these new incentives, helping the elderly, which is not a bad thing. But who are you? What, how do you rate this kind of a job? When the townspeople have no idea. There used to be when a job was posted, the requirements that were required, that you needed to have that job. So there's a lot of things, you know, besides. Do we have a forum tonight? Who are we missing? Not only one councilperson. One, two, three, four? Is this lady Brennan, she's a councilwoman? Oh, I thought she was a deputy. Are you, are you both? But, okay, but you're not here full-time. Do you work full-time? Are you saying no? Because I can't hear you.
I have a full-time job and I have this job as well.
Well, this is an elected job.
Yeah.
Okay. The supervisor, I understand that you have, you kind of control your own hours. Or do you work a nine-to-five job? Uh huh. Primarily?
I'm here every day at nine.
And leave when?
I leave at three to four.
Is that full-time? Is that a full-time supervisor? Used to be part-time, that's why I'm asking you.
Yep.
Okay.
Over 30 hours a week, I am here. And in the evenings and.
Oh, I never realized it had an hour function. I thought it was a full-time job. As I called your office one day, spoke with your secretary, she was quite pleasant. I did call on the Verizon because Brookshire Drive where I live is on a list. We happen to have light poles. It's an old street. And my, there is a Verizon wire that is supposed to be going up that pole and not in the ground. I spoke with Glenn. This is the number. He did call me back the same day that I called him. He will be calling me again because of the questions I asked. He probably is some kind of a public relations guy. And I am, I understand from Ms. Rizzo and I thank her for driving me. I don't drive at night, so you don't have to worry about me being on the road. Even though that I would very much like to come to more meetings. It's very difficult. I do go for, on the website. But I want to warn you. We don't always, you don't always have these committee meetings on your website. And if it's a day meeting, I might be able to make some of those meetings because I drive during the day. Unfortunately, this is a borrowed amplifier and it works terrific. It really helps me to hear you better so that when you are speaking, I'm not straining. I hope to come to more meetings. I really do. I'd like to be a part of this town for as long as I can. But there are answers. And there are people that are observing how we like the town to run. We have a comprehensive plan. We have committee support when we need it. I'm probably well over my time. But I thank you very much and hopefully we'll see you soon. Oh, I want to thank my driver, Ms. Rizzo, who called me. And I said, oh, I'm jumping for joy. Because I don't drive at night. Thank you very much.
Are they referring to FiOS?
Yes.
Oh, FiOS is a good thing. And spectrum is a monopoly.
I'm just going to use my first name because occasionally I raise this topic in a public forum. I have received veiled threats or very strange phone calls the next day and I'm not making that up. So I'm Beth and I live on Van Antwerp between Plum and Grand Boulevard. And there's two topics I want to raise today. But I want to start with, on my father's side, I know I don't look it, but I descend from the Agla La Nation. And I find the opening soliloquy to be a little disingenuous. So I'm nervous tonight, but I, I, that's all I'm going to say about it. Now, the two reasons I am here tonight, and I've raised this in the past here and then I stopped trying, but it seems to have gotten worse. Van Antwerp has a four-ton weight limit on it. And I understand there's some question as to whether or not the section I live on deserves that sign. However, that sign is there. And I'm going to do some kindergarten math. 2,000 tons, 2,000 pounds equal one ton, right? Okay. Now, I'm going to skip through some simple facts. Please don't interrupt. Breaking, breaking distance of a semi-truck is twice that of a car. At 30 miles per hour, it's 153 feet, which is about half the block to come to a stop in good condition. And none of the semi-trucks that I see there are supposed to be on that road. Here are some typical ways, the vehicles I see there daily. They're only supposed to be on that road if they're doing work on that road. If they have a stop on that road, that's the only excuse to be over the weight limit. Okay, the dump trucks I see daily. Empty are 26,000 pounds. Full, they can be 36 tons. The semi-trucks, empty, 35,000 pounds. Full, 84,000 pounds. The tree service woodship trucks are 13 tons empty. The commercial stump grinder or the large augers they tow behind them typically are 1,200 to 6,000 pounds. So the augers are being towed behind the chipper truck. You know, they chip the wood and it goes into that truck. All right? So then there are the logging trucks, occasionally there about once a month in that section, are 80 to 88,000 pounds. I've spoken to the police about it. I went to safety meetings about it. They have no business being on that little and narrow residential street. And it's been getting worse and worse. And the fumes are so bad, I know people think I'm exaggerating, dramatic. I can be inside my house with the windows shut and I can smell the diesel and the carbon monoxide in the morning traffic. The other reason I'm here is that I lived here until I was 19. I moved away and I came back. And there has been a continual chipping away, no pun intended, of the trees. And there's been little to no replacement. I'm going to say no replacement because it is so dismal that I don't think it's 10% of the curb trees have been replaced. They can lower the temperature as much as 40 degrees. They clean the air. They raise the property value on average $7,000 apiece. And I find myself giving out ice. And I know I'm not alone. When the mail couriers show up and it's 95 and 100 degrees and there's no shade on the sidewalk, I will say, look, I'm not, you know, not trying to hit on you, but you can always ring the doorbell. And I give them ice because people will pass out and die. This past August, I normally walked a price chopper. I came home, I almost passed out. That's something I've never experienced before. So I had, what is it, the tree committee? I had a brief conversation with them about five years ago. I see that nothing has been done. I understand you're claiming 15 feet from the curb. Take that 15 feet, get a grant and replant the trees. If you have the right to take the trees, you should be replacing them. And a little bird told me, who works for the town, that you guys, gals have been using the money from replant, that's supposed to go to replanning trees, that that fund is being raided. There are plenty of nurseries in the area. It's supposed to be one tree every 20 or 30 feet. And that's not vanity. Those trees are not there, you know, I'm not out here as a tree hugger per se. One tree gives enough oxygen a day for four people, a mature tree. So I don't know if you want, I wrote this out. It's up to you if you want to take a look at my chicken, my chicken scrawl. But it's, you know, in LA, my sister lives in LA and then I'm going to sit down again. They take it very seriously because the temperature, but we're hitting some of those temperatures. The people be waiting for the bus and they've told stories of their shoes starting to melt. and they've told stories of their shoes starting to melt while they're standing and they're trying to find shade in a lamppost. Well, in this area, go ahead. When it's 95 degrees on Van Antwerp or Plum or Palmer or out here by the shopping state where the grass all died, try to find some shade. And there are people out there working. That's all I have to say. I will work to plant trees. I have no problem with it. If someone needs a hand in planting trees, I have no problem helping with that.
Leslie Gold, 1919 Pawtucket Avenue. I'm very pleased about One Development, which is the contract for the organic waste treatment at our wastewater treatment plant. It's been a long time coming, but I think it's a great development. I think the town wins because we get some money out of it to help with the whole plan to go net zero. It's great for whoever our customers wind up being. And it's great for the environment that this material is going to be treated properly. So I'm very enthusiastic about that. I will note that the tentative budget hearing schedule is already on the calendar. And I was surprised both at one of them being Anyam Kippur and at the preciseness of the schedule. And normally I like precision, but when it's one topic at this time and the next topic an hour later, it seems rather inefficient. The intent really is to stop and wait for that time. If these are tentative schedules, then maybe just labeling a tentative would be useful. I did not see the supervisor's budget posted yet. I presume it's going on tomorrow. And I'm looking forward to reading it. I am disappointed with one of the resolutions on tonight. I'm disappointed both with its content and with the fact that there was nothing done to generate any public discussion or consideration of the matter. And frankly, the title of it doesn't really tell you what it's about. It's a resolution 2022-245 to repeal resolution 202082 and release allocated funds from fund balance. What it doesn't say in the title, but if you read the whole resolution you see, is giving up the town's right of first refusal on a parcel on River Road that is adjacent to the town park on River Road. And the intent was at some point to annex that to the town park. I, I'm disappointed that that won't happen. And I'm even more disappointed that there really was no public discussion of this. I think the park could be larger. I like the idea of having a central park that's fairly central to the town. Not perfect, but there's no perfect option. I foresee a day when we do what should have been done already and move Niska Day celebrations off Ball Town Road into an area where the town can better control it without messing up intercounty travel and everything else and without really dumping on a few homeowners in that one section of Ball Town Road. And one of those homeowners is very near and dear to my house, to my heart. He lives in the house I grew up in. And I will tell you, Niska Day is horrible for us. Can't get in and out of the driveway. Have to put cones out. Have to wait for the police or whoever else is working security to facilitate that. And it really does mess up traffic. It should be relocated. And to me, the main town park would be the logical place. And for this resolution to go forward without any public input really bothers me. So I hope you at least postpone it. And if you don't want to do a public hearing, at least have an informational meeting where you get some information and feedback from the residents. And, oh. One thing about Verizon FiOS. This is a project that was started many years ago and stalled out. I had heard that it was because there were some issues with the town. I can't verify that, but that's what I heard. But regardless, as a public utility, they have a right to dig in the town right away. And in the state right away, county right away. That's part of the function of being a public utility. The intent is to get rid of the copper coaxial cable that we all grew up with because it's now outdated technology. And I'm one of those people who is very reluctant to give up on this. And when the PSC first approved the idea back after New York City got slammed with, I believe it was a hurricane, and Verizon went in and said, you know, a good part of our infrastructure is wiped out. There's no point in us replacing it with the same. We want to go to the new stuff. And the PSC considered it. It was publicly advertised on their agenda and everything else. And the PSC gave them the go ahead for New York City, and it just went on from there, I believe. I know FiOS is supposed to be actually more secure than our missile copper cable. I'm having a hard time adjusting to that thought, but I have no basis on which to disagree with it. And it's supposed to be much faster and better serviced. And many of us don't rely on Spectrum for our phone service or internet or anything else. Some of us just rely on it for TV cable. And they say that's going away too. So I really would like to see the FiOS build out continue. I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Cummins. I am the owner and resident of 26 South Fagan Ave. And I wanted to give a little backstory to the resolution 256 from today. I'm a nurse. I have 16 years of critical care experience. And I have owned this property for roughly two years. In June, on a hot day, I noticed there was a puddle on the ground in front of my mailbox. That same day, I notified the town. And I'll be totally honest, I've been kicking myself ever since I did that. They were there promptly to dig up the problem and told me that, of course, it was my pipes to the main that were broken that needed to be replaced. And conveniently, they were also lead. So I had to replace them because they were old. So here we are, $7,000 later, roughly. And, not bad. You're right. Because the person who replaced it is the previous owner, Paul Luskin. And he did a great job. Such a great job that now there has been two other breaks in the same line. So there has now been three water main breaks on the same line in that property since mine was replaced. The quality of my water is subpar, to say the least. The water is brown. It smells of metal. It is staining my sinks, my tubs, my showers. You can scrape it off of it. It's requiring me to clean and scrub every other day. So to remedy the issue, the hydrant was placed on a flushing schedule because of my many phone calls every Monday and every Friday. And, and that, and that seems to be like band-aiding it. But band-aiding, meaning the highlight of that. And I insisted that someone come over to take water samples to check my water because of its color and smell. It smells of metal. And so someone came over on a Wednesday and flushed the hydrant several times. And then proceeded to take the water sample that I requested. I mean, I'm not a rocket scientist, but that doesn't make any sense to me. And it was also not on the flushing schedule, meaning it was a Wednesday. And they flushed it twice and then took the sample that I requested. When I questioned the employee about why this happened, I was told that it would give them a more favorable outcome. Of course it would. It would give a more favorable outcome to them. So my water was left running also on this day and several other days for hours because I imagine it would give a favorable outcome. I was told by Debbie and Paul that there was a problem with this hydrant for years and that the hydrant was flushed weekly while they lived there for, I think, 20 plus years. Well, I have owned the property. There has never been any flushing of this hydrant until after my water main break in June. I have cameras surrounding my entire property, and there has never once been a flushing of this hydrant until this issue. I have three small children. They're five, two, and one. They drink the water. They drink it in the tub. They drink it all the time, despite me telling them not to because they're babies. They do. My son has an autoimmune disease called Bichette's, and it causes him to have open mouth ulcers in his mouth. He has been very sick for years. And we have been inconvenienced by doctor visits, trucks all over our property, and unexpectedly not having water on several occasions because of all of the breaks in the line. Do you, do you know how hard it is to make a bottle after a 10-hour shift when you have no water? This is unacceptable. It is not okay. The town trucks have been parking in my driveway for months regularly, daily. Dump trucks, trailers, rollers, backhoes, creating huge cracks and rubble in my driveway, which maybe it wasn't perfect to begin with, but now it's torn up. As of last week, a new hydrant was installed on my property after many, many phone calls, emails, nagging. I don't have time for this. I am a busy mom of three, and I work full time. I am exhausted, but I am standing here because it is not fair that my children are sick. And is it from the water? I don't know. I've been very sick myself, and I'm better now. But I want it fixed. And so it's my professional opinion that it's best for everyone that the automatic flushing machine be placed on the hydrant that is located on my property. Thank you. And that they replace my driveway, please.
And they replace it, and you replace the driveway.
Thank you.
That you tore up. Oh my God, honey. This is worse than I thought. I guess our taxes aren't high enough.
Normally, I looked around, and normally you have department heads here. And I look around, and they must all, except for a couple of them, be on vacation. But it's a good, it would be good if these department heads would get a copy of the comments because it doesn't really have a lot to do with you people because you're not out in the field. But I do, I am so surprised. As you may know, and maybe these people don't know, that we are the highest assessed town in the county. We are the highest paid department heads in the county. And I find that they're not always worth what they think they are. And you're taking a brunt for maybe you're not being inactive enough in the counties or in the county departments. The other departments that I personally deal with and I have found to be acceptable are the assessors' office. And of course, my love with the town clerk because they have probably, they could run the town. You might want to give them more responsibility because they're quite competent. But I thank you. And you've taken a beating. You all look very somber. But you are elected to take care of us. And you can be unelected at the next time we have a board meeting because these issues are not ever, ever completely solved. And I am upset about the budget because we have had budget hearings. Now we're going into October. And tomorrow, you're going to rush out this budget. We'll all be at the town clerk's office trying to get copies of it. I've called before. What's going on with the budget? We always had a temporary budget. What's going on? So I can't say that you people are all that knowledgeable about the town. And I think that should be required if you're running for office for a town that's 200 years old. I think sometimes the residents that have lived here 10 years or less know more about the town than sometimes these elected officials. And I am a registered political person, as you can tell. But on the other hand, I am disappointed. I'd like a little bit more input in this business of changing your hours and letting your help or the people that are friends of friends. And I laughed when you said you couldn't find some, some person. I said, well, gee, that's surprising. Everybody has a friend who'd like to get a job from you. But I thank you very much.
I tell my clients that this is an old Indian word for high taxes. All my real estate clients.
I, I just want to, Lynda Ruse, I just want to make one comment. After listening to these people, the town has problems. I know you like to say it doesn't. But I'm just going to say this last thing. I know the supervisor, you spoke up to defend your hours. But you never said that that rumor about you holding a meeting with certain Democratic committee people, and I'm a Democratic committee person, is false, that you never had a meeting about wanting your salary to go up to 100,000, and you wanted them to sell it to the community. After listening to these people, if that even came to fruition, this, this place would be jammed with people. That would be egregious. And any board member up here who would support it should be removed. Instantly, step down. Thank you.
You're taking a hit for a lot of what became before you and what you inherited. You really are. I know you are. But I remember, I sat on the zoning board of appeals for 19 years. And the town was run very differently then. Very differently. With a completely different, a true sense of integrity. And I, I don't know what's gone on with the last two supervisors. But, I don't know, since Luke left, it's never really been the same. I'm hoping that you will restore our faith in it. But our streets are full of potholes. This lady, you should have the, you should have the highway department out there tomorrow looking at, looking at her driveway. Looking at her driveway. She shouldn't have to incur a $6,000 expense to put in a new driveway because the town trucks ripped up her driveway. That I'll tell you. And believe me, if I were a real estate lady, I'd get a lawyer that would see that you did pay for it.
Are there any other residents who'd like to speak for privilege of the floor?
Oh, here comes, here comes. He was in the cockpit.
If there are no further comments, we will move on to the resolutions.
Hey, come again.
Okay. Starting with resolution number 2022-244, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution amending resolution number 2022-177.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-245, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appealing resolution number 2020-82 and releasing allocation funds from fund balance.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution number 2022-246, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing gas piping replacement at the town's wastewater treatment plant. at the town's wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-247, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a large-format scanner for the town's engineering department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-248, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution extending a contract with Sterling Environmental Engineering PC to perform landfill monitoring services.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Aye.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-249.
A resolution authorize...
Oh, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland.
A resolution approving the warrant for residential and commercial utility building for the first half of 2022.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-250, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-251, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland. Will the clerk please call the roll?
A resolution authorizing the repair of the sludge dryer at the town's wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-252, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing a grounds worker in the Parks Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-253, sponsored by Councilmember Delarada. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution appointing members to the town's Historic Preservation Committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-254, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing expenditures from fund balance.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please read?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-255, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of pumps for Buckingham Drive Sewer Pump Station.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-256, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of two auto-flushing hydrants.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-257, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution awarding a contract for the installation of drainage piping on Holly Hill Road.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-258, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a trailer for use in the town's Highway Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-259, sponsored by Supervisor Puccioni. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution amending the town's purchasing policy.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Puccioni.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. Resolution Number 2022-260, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution awarding a contract for sewer lining project.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.[1636.32]